I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, you want to take a roll?
Yep. Merrick Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Jazz.
Yes.
And Walt Slager is absent with notice.
All right, we have a motion to approve or any additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We have a motion for the minutes from the 9:20 meeting? One second. Any discussion?
Can I, should I abstain since I was not here? I mean, I read through everything, but... Did you visually go?
Yeah, I don't know that you have.
You don't have to. It's up to you.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Any other discussion? Not? We'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Mattson? All right, no bills?
No bills.
All right. Public comment. Does anybody have any comments not on the agenda?
Yep.
All right. State your name and...
Good evening, Benjamin Burger. We're looking in the future for a new aquatic center swimming pool, and I would like to suggest to the council that when that time comes upon that committee that we limit the number of people that are already on one board to be on the pool when that time is presented. I just feel that too many people there are on this board, that board, this committee. There's not enough of the general public, the same people. That's all I have to say.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like volunteer.
Who's that committee guy?
What? I didn't hear anything.
Anybody else? All right, we'll start with visitors. First up, Ms. Leah Johnson. Update on the 2022 Gymboree.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Just a quick update on the 2022 event summary. It went well as an overall. Just kind of briefly go through some of the things that we know attendance and we know numbers on. Little Miss Hartford, we had 10 girls participate. That is actually up from prior years from what they've been ranging. And that's six or seven. I can tell you that Kennedy won, and she has been having an absolute blast. I don't know if you guys have done any things around town, but I know she's been at the Hartford Building Center. She was at the fire station when they did their, run their fire safety thing, right? And she sent pictures with some cops and some perverts and just tons of people. She's been having a blast. And I think the latest thing she did was the hometown Christmas, or the home, or... And then I know the next thing for sure she'll do is hometown Christmas. So she has been just a great little... Little Miss Hartford. She's been wearing her crown, and she's, mom and dad said she's been having a blast. So it's kind of fun to see pictures of everywhere she's been, and she makes sure she's got the crown and section. So... Movie night, we did show movie Muppets Treasure Island. The attendance is about the same. It runs right around that 25 to 50 autistic families. Some come early, some leave early, some come in the middle. The proceeds of that, it's more just for the concessions and like to just a local nonprofit charity, or not a charity, but a group that did all of their concessions. So... Car show, we had amazing weather. I don't know if any of you guys came out. We kind of asked for a nicer night as far as weather was concerned. I know we had 90 vehicles that actually registered, but we had several of them that showed up, didn't want to register, didn't want to be judged on. They just wanted to show their cars. It's kind of common. Some people just prefer just to do like a show. So I know we had 90-plus cars. And the burnout, we had 16 registered to do that, and the crowd is always huge for that. So that was amazing as well. And we topped it off with the 12:70 band that night. And it took quite a few people in the park. I know you guys have ever heard of them. But they're a younger group, but they play a lot in their 50s and 60s, perfect for a car show. The vendors in the park, the vendors were about the same as in the past years as well. We have a nice turnout for both Friday and Saturday because we did give that action again. The vendors had lots of compliments from our vendors. So hopefully we can actually increase those numbers. I know with COVID, we've had a few people that have not come back to the vendor area. So hopefully those numbers can go up. The 5K, I know there was one, but I got no numbers. No one reported any information. But I know I've seen some pictures out there that there was a 5K that did happen. And if you're a runner, I guess that's...
Cherry, did you run?
Did you run?
No, but we did. We were in charge of it.
We signed off when they had 29 or 30.
Yeah, 3:30 rush. Okay.
I would write that down.
Good.
That's good to know. I don't run, so if you see me running, you might want to run. So the parade, we had 38 entries. Also, again, another nice turnout for our parade with our band that comes through. They always like to kind of show up, but they've got to do that. It's kind of their nice little practice between seasons. And then obviously, we had a fire department. We have the food show. They just have a really good turnout. So we have that. Stage entertainment, we had, again, the American Legion did their flight disposal. We have the West Central Band, who they do the jazz band performance, which also is kind of their nice performance in the middle of the summer that they don't normally get. We had Phil Baker again this year. We had the Something New Band, and then the Sioux Falls Temple Band. In the park entertainment, we have Mr. Twister back. He always draws a crowd. I don't know how that man can twist them for that long, but four hours straight, it's nothing but only twisting. And then Color B was new. She's a face painter. That kind of went away also during COVID just because obviously putting something on someone's face, you're pretty close to them. So she was pretty excited to be back. And then Hidden Mania is always a hit for the kids to go find money in the stands. So... Community Destopper, Colorberg did that with Sunshine helping with that. And I know they had a really nice turnout as well. I'm not sure how much they raised for it, but that's always a good fundraiser for them over here. So I know they continue to do that. And then our Saturday night concert, we sold 154 wristbands. We actually had a ton of compliments on the music in the park and the performance. We had Foreplay, which is out of the Mankato area, and they brought quite a crowd. I don't know if any of you got there to see it, but they have an incredible stage show. So we had a lot of fun there. For beer sales, just to wrap it up, wristbands, there was some, I think you guys seen this during budget time, but the wristbands are 70. Beer sales are right around that, just over 1,400 for tips, and then the sales themselves are just over 8,400. And then you take our costs as well. We had about just over $5,500 for profit in beer sales. And then we wrapped up the weekend with our community worship. And I think they average started around that 50 or so, maybe a little bit more in numbers. But that always ends up to be a really good turnout. So again, the weather, weekends last for actually better weekends. So looking forward to this coming year. We start Monday at 6:00 at the first station. So if any of you are interested, we are all volunteers, and if you want to give your two cents and have a voice for the Gymboree Committee come join us, we meet once a month on Monday nights. First, no, second Monday, second Monday of the month. So that's all I got. Questions?
Have you had any conversation with the guys downtown with Chris or Big Jay from the South Fire regarding the Saturday night?
Uh, no. I know she reached out to me just asking when the next meeting was. I told her that the meeting actually that we had would have been just a 2022 wrap-up. The first meeting wouldn't happen until October. So I told her on the letter, no meeting this.
Will you do that? Will you advise them so they... Because I know that they would like to have conversation with you guys at least on how that's going. Because they've talked with us, you know, so we're just...
They probably talk to you more than they talk to us.
Well, they probably be talking to you guys, too.
That's fine.
So I would just like to make sure that that happens. Money, you asked again this year for 25, is that correct? Okay. And Carnival's kind of still up in the air, if it's gonna happen, if you find one or not find one?
And if I find one, I have to come see you and I know where you sit.
Right. And I think this is correct. In years past, we had cars on Saturday at the park. This year, not?
The only year we had it on Saturday was COVID. And that was the year that we didn't do anything in June. We postponed it to a one-day event in September.
And I was messed up.
Yep.
Because, okay.
That was when COVID was full blown. And like I said, all we did for June was a car parade.
That was like in September, then?
Yes.
I kind of got mixed up on that. I was trying to remember. When I was down there Saturday, I thought, geez, I always thought we had cars on Saturday, and then I... So I was goofed up. I couldn't do it.
Just one year.
Is there a thought of having them come on Saturday?
Where are you going to put them?
On the grass like we did, you know, I don't...
Where are you going to put the others?
Oh, wait. We can't put them on the grass. Yeah. Just a thought. I'm just bringing that up. Because I know that year when we had it in September, the cars were all there. There was a lot of people there. That's the only reason I bring that up.
Yep. The only thing we run into when you start moving into September is your school complex.
Yeah, I know. I get it.
Yep. That's the only downfall that we run into because you've got football, you've got bands. The marching band is huge, and they have, obviously, your parents strongly follow that. And a lot of your fans do, too, because we've got a really good performer.
Yep. All right. Anybody else?
Seems like parade attendance was up.
Yeah.
As far as people.
Yeah, we shortshot our...
We didn't even have enough freebies for half of the parade.
Yeah, I think we had...
Double order next year.
We had a thousand, we had a thousand...
1,500.
1,500 freebies, and we didn't make it to the end.
As I say, I could see a freebie would happen. And just kids, like little kids.
Yeah, we weren't, you know...
Double order.
We were getting a buck from each kid. No, I'm just kidding about that.
The truth comes out our...
I'm just kidding. We donated it. All right, anything else for Leah? All right?
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You bet. All right, next up, we got Hartford area, excuse me, Community Foundation grant for the dog park. And I hope as long as you guys want to stick around to the end, so if we take a pitch, you want to do it right now. I'll see you later. So yeah, I think I took a long... So...
Do that?
Yeah, let's do that. I would have brought my girls' gun. You bet.
Yes. Trying to crock it out, but it might not.
Since I wore shorts, this is...
On his knees.
Yeah.
Ready? One, two.
Teresa's got the old-school camera.
I'm sorry.
Got her?
Awesome.
Well, thanks, you guys. Thanks for all of your work. Thank you. And who gets the chair? We give that?
I did just look at the timeline for the dog park because it's Karen.
It's worth $3,000.
I was so worried. About working a minute.
While we got these guys here, Craig, give them just kind of the quick update, or maybe they already know.
No, actually, so sat down with Teresa today. We talked a little bit about it. We're looking at doing something on the 21st.
20th to 21st.
20th, 21st, okay.
We want to make sure the girls got their presents, so I emailed them, and you're looking at calendars, I'm assuming? I have to blow them out.
I looked at the calendars, and they're not good, but the 21st is the football game in the week. Oh, and then we had to talk Troy on going to the stampede on the 21st, and then that worked.
But that's in the evening.
Okay.
It will be dark by then.
Okay, fine.
Fourth of July is what we're thinking.
That's what we're thinking.
That won't interfere with the stampede.
That's...
Are you 20th Friday?
Friday.
Friday, the 21st.
21st. You gonna be here to be gotten a joke, guy?
Yeah, you don't want to see this part.
Our dog's running.
Oh, absolutely. We've also been... Can I bring that up now about Pastor Seth?
Yeah, sure.
So when we do the ribbon cutting, Pastor Seth from the Memphis Church has suggested or offered that we do a dog blessing.
Oh, that's awesome.
So I think we're gonna do that, too, as long as we don't have, you know, dogs fighting and stuff.
I was gonna bring my dog for a play.
The one thing we did talk about is try to keep the number of dogs to a minimum so we don't have 50 dogs there and perpetuate the myth that...
Yeah.
So don't put it on the email flyer.
Right. Don't put out there, say, bring your dog, like, we need some dogs as props.
We need nice dogs.
A handful of dogs as props would be great.
It's a soft opening.
A soft opening. There you go. Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody.
You bet. Thanks to Nina and Alexa. Thank you for the girls' cause for all the work you guys did on this.
Well, thanks to Craig's team and Teresa for all the work. So, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Would you say October 21st?
21st, yeah. Looking at type 430. I'll shoot an email.
All right, let's move on to applications, agreements, and ordinances. Second reading of ordinance 735, which is to amend the zoning regulations and adopt it to commercial buildings.
There have been no changes since first reading.
First reading passed last meeting?
Yep.
Second reading of ordinance 735, let's present it. See? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara? All right. Next up, we're gonna talk about the senior citizen review. Approve the purchase agreement for the senior citizen page house.
So the senior package has been drafted by Tom and is just a purchase agreement. So basically, it's just straightforward. It's $30,000. We'll purchase the building. Basically, split the closing costs, you know, it's a general purchase agreement. There'll be taxes. They could do pay taxes up till closing date, and then it's switched over to the city. Tom thought that, you know, this would be the first step in the process. And then once the city acquires the building, we would have to do agreements, leases with the two entities that are in the building. And I actually sat down with both members from Suluam Library and the senior center. We kind of went through some of those details we were talking about last time, like maintenance and cleaning, insurance and whatnot, and basically sent that information to Tom, and he's going to draft then a couple of agreements for us to review at our next meeting, hopefully. Except those will have more of the details. This is strictly just the purchase agreement for the building.
And both parties understand what the buy-in this has is?
Yes.
Well, it's in there. I just wanted... Thanks, you burgers. Well, I haven't said that. All right. Any discussion or motions from the council?
And basically, we won't close on this until we review those agreements. Can you say the closing date isn't till November?
Right. Though these agreements would also be...
In place.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this purchase agreement.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Mattson? Matt's approved. All right. So we'll keep moving that forward, keep talking to you guys, and get the agreements all in place.
Soon as Tom gives, drop to me, I said I'll send it out to both those entities for their review as well before we bring it to you guys.
I think it'll be a great, great view. Is it true you've already secured the funds?
And on another note, the HJDF has made a motion to use envision funds. I put it in my report for $30,000. And yes, I do have a check yet. I'm not cashing it until we close, just to make sure everything goes through, whatnot, but yes.
Appreciate that from the HJDF. You bet.
Yeah, that's great. That made it really easy to approve this and push over.
Yeah, it helps, doesn't it?
Like, oh, that's where the money's coming from. Okay, well, let's go.
Yeah, exactly. No, so, yeah, they use envision funds, saw it as one of their pillars of, you know, quality of life. So, yeah, it's great.
Because there are a few things we're gonna have to do. So it's not like we're not gonna have a lot of money to spend. All right. Moving forward, the last item in the ordinances and agreements is a billboard lease between Transport Refrigeration of South Dakota and Hartford for billboard number three. The information's in the packet with recommendations from staff to approve. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brenneman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. We will move on to reports. Mini-Haha County Sheriff's report, Deputy Carter.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. A little underdressed, Tom. Forgive me.
You got your badge on that.
Got the badge, so it was official.
Yeah.
Doesn't look suspicious, really. Anyway, calls for service, this last 30 days, we had 2065, which was an increase from last month of 2. Nothing to really report that's noteworthy. Well, it's kind of like on my heart to share, but just on record where I'm like, Hartford's a very safe community. And even though these numbers may look like it's a lot, a call to service, it does. But like, we don't really have like violent crime that's happening. This is a very safe community. A lot of the calls for service, as you can see, are traffic stops, is the majority of them. And I'm just making sure that folks aren't burning down our roads and stuff, especially here at school and stuff. So that's why I just wanted to assure that, because I feel like every time I'm up here, we just talk about these numbers, whether they're up or down or whatever. But I just wanted to assure that Hartford is the same community. So, yeah, that's all I got. Any questions for me?
Just love to see a little more police presence on Vandemark. There've been a lot of complaints about the speed of traffic as it's exiting the community or as it's entering the community now by Vandemark. So for sure, if there's a way to put a speed trap there, I mean, I would encourage it.
Right. No, it's been, that's been put on the pass-on sheets for night deputies. And even when folks are coming and going from school or work or whatever, so it's just tiny. Thank you, guys.
You bet. All right, Chamber and Economic Development Director, Ms. Amy Bar.
Thank you. My information's in the packet, but we'll add a few things to it, of course, because things have been ongoing. As you heard earlier, we just decided on a date for the collar ribbon cutting, so October 21st, 4:30. We'll confirm that for sure. They do have their annual meetings up for November 29th at Sephora Valley Great Life. So we will be preparing for that. The new app, My Community, that is going to roll out November 1st. It has been submitted. They're waiting to hear back from Google, or excuse me, from the Apple Store and from the Android Store to make sure that it's in working mode. We're adding a couple more things to that, so on November 1st, hopefully, the rollout will be perfect. We've added some events that we'll be automatically posting to Facebook here in the near future. We set up the new members posts and sent out emails this afternoon for ribbon cuttings and other events. So that was taken care of on the chamber side. But the most important, of course, is if you have not registered to have a trunk at the Trunk or Treat, please go online and register. Yes, Cindy? I have not seen one from Sanford. Maybe you?
Oh, really?
No. So maybe you'd like to have a trunk or treat there. Unless I missed it, I could have. But this is a great opportunity. We did have one change to it this year. Instead of all the trunks being in the high school, we're gonna have parking in high school, and the trunks are gonna be in the middle school.
You should probably direct that at the local clinic.
There you go. She might know someone. She might know someone. So this will be happening Saturday, October 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00. So if you have young ins, you know, even friends and family that are visiting you, please encourage them to come see our trunks. We have lots already signed up. I think we have about 15 to 20. So it should be a good one. Hopefully, weather permitting. It's very, very good. So, yeah, that's it on the chamber side. Economic development. Tomorrow, we have a meeting, and one of our speakers tomorrow will be Joe Kipley. He is running for the county commission. So he's gonna come and just tell us a little bit about himself and introduce himself to us. October 12th, we have Gerald Benega as the keynote speaker for that meeting. He will tell us what the county commission has been doing for our rural communities and whatnot as well. We have signed up our calendar for the annual meeting, November 16th at Sephora Valley Great Life for HJDF, and we continue to do work as needed. That's my update. Any questions?
We'll be attending the county commission meeting on October 18th.
Yes.
Also, I don't know if anybody's reported, but just so everybody's aware, 9 o'clock.
So it's the 18th for sure?
Yes, the 18th at 9:00. Yes, thank you for reminding me.
Yep. Wish you mentioned that tomorrow morning to the HJDF folks.
And I forgot a couple people signed up are ready to go, so I think they're gonna be here.
On another note, this affects Amy and Teresa. We did have a meeting yesterday regarding rollout of our new logo and tagline. And quit smiling, Amy.
I'm just thinking you're taking it from her recording it, probably.
Well, probably. I know she's got it in there, but...
That's good. We're gonna have good.
She likes to have meetings, tell, talk about stuff once in a while.
You go for it.
So it's amazing how many things have the logo on it that we're gonna have to change. That's what we discovered with our meeting, so we'll be working on that. That nice shiny white water tower is just waiting for that logo.
Craig's truck.
Well, Craig's truck. That should be the first one. Craig's truck should be the first.
Water tower does look nice.
It really does look nice. That's gonna really look good on there when we get that logo on there. I think we should have Craig Chitty up there, hang it on before he goes.
I was going to.
All right. Shit, that's a word you don't hear. Only old people say shit. All right, Amy, anything else?
Not unless you have something for me.
Anybody have any questions for you? Okay. All right, we'll move on to our city engineer.
Good evening, everyone.
You bet.
Not much gone since the last meeting, just finalized that review of the block type components plans. Given, recommend approval of those plans, they can keep it on their site up there. Still an update on ENAP's landing and turtle creek punch lists. Other than the projects, six months going well. They were shaping the roadway along Moreton North Month. Today, they've got concrete in the driveways and a curb matter for that mainline on Mont. And they're working on a GD circle stormstorm today. All goes well, you know, barring any inclement weather. They're looking to start to pave Mont on Monday and probably be done Tuesday or Thursday. So hoping to have Mont done mid next week. On top of that, Sixth Street, the water main line has been installed up to Vandemark. So what's remaining there is just the service connections and then the other water main titans at Eastern, Mary Lane, and Vandemark. It sounded like services would take two to three days, and then the other water main titans should be about two days total. It should not be as disruptive as the one to connect the month just because they already have valves and much closer proximity to those. In terms of testing, the bacteria tests came back good, both of them, which is kind of shocking to this time of year to do a failing test for whatever reason. So it's good to hear. And then, you know, after water main is done, they'll do a little bit of curb matter, which is shaping the pavement. So I think there's still tracking to be done towards the end of Mont here. And we'll make sure that any asphalt goes down without problem temperatures and whatnot. Did have a change order for you. We can do this at the end if you'd like, just for that GD circle stormstorm, this at the end if you'd like, just for that G E circle stormstorm, which we discussed last time. I will note that at the meeting, we discussed it on the south side of the road at our biweekly progress meetings. It was brought up to put it further north in the Boulevard area and take out a few trees. We looked at it, contacted the residents, and they were fine to part with their trees and relocate them. We ran the numbers on there with our speech for them putting it on the south side, which is why, which is where it is actually, it's gonna go on the north side now. We figured our thought process was, since you approved the additional funds to still install that stormstorm, we would work in best interest of the city to save money where possible. So that is the change order, change order four covers for the G E circles stormstorm on the north side. Majority of that cost is just the sidewalk, an additional box, and then relocating trees. Two smaller trees relocated to Dog Park, so that helps break out on that front. And then there was one resident who didn't want a tree placed in his yard since Mont. I don't know if you wanna vote on that now or wait till the end?
We'll wait till the end. That's where she had on the paperwork, so we'll do it until the end.
Water Tower, as you mentioned, they got the exterior coated. It's very nice, clean white. They're moving on to the interior of the tank here shortly. Actually, that's it.
The wet part is done?
Yes. Yep, yep. So they're, I mean, they're getting close to that. And I believe we're talking today about, McGraw's talking today, since the city has a new logo, working to get that just as part of this contract. Because we originally had it as part of the contract, then I believe we removed it. So we can, you know, we have that price, we can add it back in. They'll get it to a water tower. So there'll be a change order for that coming next meeting. But that work will likely end up happening in December, sometimes just due to weather and temperature. I know, I know. On to the water resource recovery facility. Still checking on the plans. Met with Craig and City last week and discussed how the design is going. Got much more specific on some equipment to use. Gave Craig some info to go through and figure out really which equipment he wants to use. And then we'll start actually modeling at the building and properly allocating space within the lift station and the major facility for those pieces of equipment. Also discussed briefly the site plan and just updating that based on changes to the building. That's going well. CMAR received, we received two proposals, one from PKG there out of North Dakota, and then the other one's from Ice Lake. They are of Minnesota. So the other action item for the council tonight would be to elect or delegate two, three members to sit on the group that would be interviewing those two firms to make the selection and make a recommendation to council for which we're going. Bike and Rec Trail, there is no update at this time. The asset's still listed on the market. We are kind of starting to think, you know, maybe alternatives, what we can do just if that house doesn't sell. Even if it does, we still have to get that easement from that new owner. So we're just, we're just keeping that in our frontline, just stay, just stay ahead of it. Because we will, there will be a bit of army corps permitting since it is in the floodway there. And that is, is a bit of a time issue process.
Kind of talked internally, kind of wait till the end of the year, see what evolves. But if something doesn't happen by then, maybe look at our alternatives, whether it's a change to design, or something legally we can do to acquire the land, and just kind of investigate our alternatives then. Because we'll want to have something, some plan in place by spring. So we can, like I said, there's some, there's things to do to get that in. So make sure we get in next year. Ground is good till the end of next year, but that only goes next year because of construction season.
So I think the property owner could be convinced that having that right next to the property, you mean, selling feature, make their property more.
He felt that it could be either way. Depends on who uses internet. And he didn't wanna commit to somebody that might not want it in the backyard, or might not want the easement on their yard. So that's why he, that's what he said to me.
Sure.
So did he just have it for sale or is that?
Yeah. We actually talked to him before it was going on sale, and that's when he told us that he was looking at selling it and moving it, and that he didn't feel comfortable signing easement for somebody that could actually, somebody who's in there.
It did work. Usually there has been, but I guess the market's cooling down. I did, I went to last weekend, the rail through website said it's been on the market for sixty-three, sixty-three days, and I think it had a change of price reductions.
Yeah. I think it's been a little bit lower because they tried to sell it on its own to begin with. And it's, yeah, it's had a couple. It started really high.
High.
Still pretty tight.
But yeah, we're just starting to try to get backwards a little from the end on that just to see where we have to start considering alternatives. Storm shelter, continue working with CCOG there to get that submitted. Sophie was, Sophie the CCOG representative that's helping, helping us out. She just got back from vacation. So we're getting geared up. Yeah, she wasn't much help for a couple weeks. But we're, we're getting geared back up on that to get that submitted. And we're on track to, to get that done with the kind of internal deadline ways for ourselves. Highway 38 water main extension, got back going on that. Actually, I have a set to Craig that we got to him earlier today, as well as a preliminary project schedule. Looking to bid this one early in the year, next year. Try to get contact as well as stop space in the schedule, which is nice. It gives us the month of December to print the permit and the month of January to bid. And I'd completely decide until then. I know there's a little bit of coordination that we still have yet to do with landowners, but for our tons of, have proved to be beneficial and don't sink in for the neighbors. Western, on the Western Avenue interchange approach, the, I guess, the most fun draft of the traffic impact study was sent, I sent it to Teresa. Did not have her included in the package because it was 168 pages. I'll bog it down a little bit.
I put it in your box. Do you guys want a little fun reading?
It's mostly appendices with tables and engrams and all that. But the, the main findings of the report, as we've kind of stated, three lane from Diamond Trail, which ties into the DOT projects, north of the intersection of the road. So northbound, southbound lane with a shared center turn lane. And then on each side street, there would be three lanes as well. So for left turns onto Western from either direction. So in, on top of it being mainline along Western, there's also, we need to be about 200 feet on each of the side streets for turning movements. And the majority of that is driven by the closer to the design year conditions. One of the other findings of the report was that, you know, as the city grows, the DOT may consider signalization at the on and off ramps. And one of the conditions we found is if that occurs, then it will likely also require Mickelson and Western to also become signalized at that time, just to control traffic. And then depending on growth, if it is exceeding our target 4% growth, then I believe Opel and Western will also be recommended to be signalized at that point. The other big one is to reduce that portion of roadway from 45 to 40 miles an hour. And that is, is mainly based on turn lane length. So a big component of turn lanes is the tapers of getting into the turn lane and then actually the deceleration zone. And at 40 miles an hour, with the current driveway configurations, there's space for those proper lengths. But at 45, the turn lane lengths just exceed what is, what is there in at least to unsleet conditions. And then the other, other major finding would be to control and, and or restrict access, direct access onto Western. So, you know, currently, well, I guess not anymore there, but Grokka and the Nadino, that, that building.
Oh, Grokka, the flower shop.
The flower shop, yeah, apologize. They have what is essentially a frontage road. That's, that's kind of a form of, of access control, because then you're actually accessing the street. Whereas the direct driveways onto Western do increasingly increase the congestion. So just putting, having something in place where it is clearly defined, what the spacing between accesses can be, will be beneficial along that as well. On top of that, we've started preliminary design. And as I've mentioned in the past, we'll continue preliminary design through the end of this year. That'll be about 50% plans, just showing you what we got. And then we'll also have updated cost estimates for the council at that point.
When will this be? It'll be bid in 24?
24.
24.
It's billed in 25.
25, yep.
Are they considering to get people accustomed to it, to drop that speed limit now?
The speed limit will be pretty easy to change. That's gonna be here as a decision because it is a city street. So we don't have to go through the state or through the county.
To drop that from 45 to 40, you could, okay.
It's already 48.
It's 40 north of Mickelson.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
I need about five mile an hour for the next three years.
Whatever.
You add that up over three years, that's a lot.
That's a lot, I'm sure. Oh, yeah.
So.
Get up a couple seconds earlier.
When, when you talk about it, do we do traffic sets closer again to construction? Or like, is this it? Or we're just gonna assume a certain amount of growth?
A certain amount of growth. Yeah. So, so there were, I guess, five different models that we ran based on historical pattern, as well as the traffic contribution. And, you know, our growth rate was kind of a composite of those. And we only had a 4% because, you know, traffic growth is not directly parallel with just population growth. It just gets us a lot curves. So for the, I mean, for the duration of this report, as long as, as the growth on the roadway does not exceed 4%, I think we're fine. And I know Craig does do, does do yearly traffic counts.
We haven't done this yet.
Okay. But we've, it would be with those counts, it'd be pretty easy to check just to see if traffic is exceeding that planned value.
And I don't know if this, another study right away next year would change a whole lot, because that's when the plans would be getting designed, so you won't have a lot to change in time. And it'll be pushing pretty close to construction.
And it wouldn't really be beneficial to do another, I don't think, to do another traffic study so, so close to this one. I think really, probably the, maybe the critical time, I'd be 10 years into it. So, because this is for design year 2025, because that's when it'll go in service. So maybe 2035, say, you do another one just to make sure that, you know, they're still meshing. That, that way, if you do, you can make changes, you're ahead of the ball. Instead of, you know, 2020, 2045 comes, you realize, oh, I gotta do something. And, you know, it's, it's a nice life.
So when you say if growth is higher than anticipated, and they signalize the I-90, so that when the state gets theirs, or like 10 years from now, that's, I guess I'm confused with your recommendation.
Yes. And that's, so that was, that was one thing I had to clarify as well. So if the state does not signalize the ramps, then the city will not need to signalize Mickelson and Western in that, in that 20-year design period. But if, if they do, then I, it would be, it is encouraged to then do a traffic study to see how that impacts the flow. That was one of the things we know what it is, is the proposed site for Western we have now is very free-flowing north of South, whereas the side roads are more hindered. Whereas if you have a traffic signal there, then everyone's hindered more, you know, because that, that must stop traffic, we have to have stop signals. And that could potentially act enough further and cause lower levels of service, further sound.
You know what doesn't cause that? Roam and bells.
Oh, no, don't go there.
That was also a, an alternative to traffic light.
We've been down that road once.
I figured you'd wanna hear it.
We don't wanna hear that. I don't.
You know them that close to get it.
Wow. So are they making the bridge three? Is that three lanes wide? Turn lanes across the bridge?
That's what they're talking.
Is that the?
That would be nice.
That's what I thought. At some point, wasn't that one of the original?
Yeah, what they're, they're talking about, you know, leaving the one in existence and then moving over, shifting it to the west and putting in two lanes, or at least a lane and a half, and then they'll take the other one.
Take the other half.
And the other one still has accidents. That's what they're planning right now.
Okay. Because I thought they.
Be two wide lanes.
They're gonna put a turn lane, I think.
I think they're gonna put turn lane in.
Where are you gonna turn on the bridge?
Onto the ramps.
You have to come up. You'd be three through the bridge.
So we would have to stop behind that.
I think then, right into the top of the bridge, we'll put around. How's that? All right. All right. Anything else?
Not if you don't have any more questions.
Anything other questions on that? That's a big, big project that's out there. Man.
The study's 162 pages. That's gonna make this be a really good reason.
All right, let's go back and address his, his two items. One is the change order number four for Sacra's 23,02640, to put the storm storm in to the north Boulevard of Mont Avenue. In the packet, it's all approved, approval of the change. We got any actions, motions by the council?
Motion to approve change order number four as presented.
I'll second.
Any year in the discussion on that? Not? We'll vote. Matson?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
O'Hara? Yes.
All right. The next item under, still under engineering report is two representatives, assumed from council, to send in on the interviews of the CAMR, CMAR candidates for the wastewater treatment plant.
And what we're looking at, because I don't think we mentioned before, is that doing those interviews, like I said, we have two of them this Friday afternoon, basically between 1:00 and 3:00. So I don't know whose schedule allows that, but we, Craig's gonna be gone for a while on vacation, and he can make this Friday work. And so can the two firms. And so we want to make sure part of that. We want to get somebody on as soon as possible as well, too.
This Friday, what time?
Between 1:00 and 3:00. Can do one interview at 1:00, and then I still talk on the phone.
Jake is 1:00 at 10:00?
Gone.
I'm actually gone, too. So.
He just got back.
Are you available?
And what this committee do, they would like to interview both, you know, the firms and then have a recommendation to the council at your next meeting.
Right. So do we need a motion to put those guys on that? Or can we just? Or can I just?
You should appoint, yeah, you should just appoint.
Can I, I'll appoint Travis Keel and Jake Jazz to the CAMR screening team. How's that sound? Or a screening.
Interview, too, yeah.
Big bonus check, right?
Oh, yeah, we'll see. All right. Thanks you guys for doing that.
Let you know in two years.
All right. Anything else? Did we get everything taken care of for you?
That is it. Thank you.
Good. We'll move on to Mr. New Pickup, Craig.
I'm just gonna hit a few things. Roads, we did start to make water in this morning, then it started to get a little wet. So we quit. They're gonna finish up tomorrow. The break was nice because we could actually get the roads painted over and get them pretty good shape again. Water Tower, we talked about all that. They are hoping to be wrapped up in there this week on the inside and done. And then we'll just gotta do the disinfectant here. So hopefully next week we'll be back and based on the power. So.
We went a couple ways, Craig. Did we hit a goal of the, is it a rubberized or wet?
We were looking at the rubberized paint in the bowl, the wet area. But the availability of the product was way out. So we went back with the normal epoxy paint.
I remember. I knew we had talked about that here.
And then we looked at the inside of the, the dry part of the inside of the tower, and it's actually in really good shape yet. So they are gonna sand, they're gonna, we ordered a sandblaster, they're gonna wash it, and then go in and touch up any areas that need to be touched up, the private, and repaint that in the inside. So that'll save us a little bit of money instead of sandblasting that. It's not the elements or anything like that. It'll last as long as the outside and the inside will.
Most time do they need on that logo? If there are a chance they get it this fall?
I don't, I'm afraid the weather's gonna turn and you're not gonna get the product you want with it. Because they want to have that tank dry and warm when they put that on.
You know, I slide down, but like this, it's falling.
We don't want that. Okay, never mind.
Then the only other thing I'm gonna touch up on is just the dog park, as we talked about. Then the only other thing I'm gonna touch up on is just, uh, the dog park, um, as we talked about, uh, doing ribbon cutting and that. We did get, uh, the concrete poured before the rains came through today to get to the eighty-eight parking pad. We got that covered up, and that's all wrapped up. I've got concrete set up for Thursday to do the sidewalk coming into it. And we'll have all the concrete work will be done, and then we have started putting stuff inside, getting the spend again, everything like that done. All the fencing gates are all wrapped up and done. Um, this next week, they'll be, after we get the concrete forms off, we'll finish up the final dirt work around there and, and just do a bunch of nitpicking and getting things cleaned up as best we can before.
Signs are closed.
I just got an email today, uh, tonight, actually. I sent it back. We looked it over, they had it up. Because I told them we needed to buy it that day or, you know, prior to that date. Um, so I'm hoping that they'll have it here within a week, so.
Okay.
And trees are going in, they're gonna plant trees, you know, between the bike trowel and the fence next week.
Yep, uh, yep, this weekend, actually. Friday and Saturday is gonna start. He's got everything picked up, or quite a bit of it picked up, um, so that we can put in. So we should have the, should be, ribbon cutting, it should be final.
Perfect.
It's been going, like I said, it's, it's been going really well. When we get time to get down and work on it, that's the hard part, is just trying to get time. Trying to get as much done as we can, we can, so. And that's all I got. Uh, like I said, I will be on vacation from the eighth to the twenty-third, so I will be missing the ribbon cutting. I've been here all summer.
I already gave him this one.
Except for that one week over at Sturgis.
I was looking at it. It was like a day. I was looking at the calendars.
Oh, when they ask for time off, it's, it's uncomfortable. Oh. It's uncomfortable.
You mentioned trees. I thought you were gonna talk about the tree, though.
Yeah, I wanted that.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I did talk to Jim. Uh, we are gonna, I'm gonna call him tomorrow and give him a, a date that he's gotta be done by the sixteenth, which is a Sunday. Whatever's not done at that point, we will be hauling out of there. And we're gonna look at hauling it to the tree site and over by Ellis and getting it rid of that way, so. Um, he was there, his dad was there. They broke down again, one of the hammers for the grinding broke down, and, I mean, this is common with them. He was there today to try and get it fixed. He's hoping that he'll have, be able to start grinding it again on Friday or Saturday. So everything, every load he gets on there, he figures there's probably four loads in there. That's probably, I was figuring about three, but he thought four. So hopefully we can get them out of there before then. So I'm gonna call him tomorrow and tell him that it has to be done by this stage or we will be getting rid of ourselves, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to have everything cleaned up according to FEMA by the twenty-first anyway, so we have to.
Yeah.
Just, everything he takes out is less cost for the city. Because he's just, he's doing it for freedom, whatever he gets off the profit off the chip. So hopefully we can keep it going on and get it done, but if not, we'll, we'll get it out in that week, so.
Yeah, we appreciate everything.
I forgot to put in my report. I, after I sent it over to Tracy, I thought about it and was like, huh.
And I'll go back to live trees. I keep getting, uh, emails from the nursery, so there's apparently a abundance of trees. You might be able to find a deal on some. We need to find somewhere downtown. So I'll forward those to you next time I get one.
We can do that. I know we've, we've lost a lot of trees in the last two years. Um, and some have been like four or five-year-old trees or even older, um, whether it's drought or what. Um, I talked to Mike about this just the other day. Where are they going around? We've got the list of everything that we've fallen out of dead. Where are they going around and look at the dates, when they got planted, the variety they are, and see if there's some type of a, uh, pattern going on with serving trees that maybe they're only making it so many years in the soil conditions and dying. So we're gonna look at that and see if there's something that we need to change in our plan with trees.
All right.
Because we have fallen in the past, like, some trees just do not grow in some areas and done. We've lost them year after year after year, the same trees.
All right. Anything else for Craig? All right. Here.
My report's in the packet, and not much to add. Wish you have any questions?
What's, what was different about August this year?
What's that?
What was different about August this year when you look at last year compared to, I mean, usually us?
In the general fund?
Yeah, like the revenue and expenses are a little the wrong way.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe have to look.
Might be some of the bigger projects we've done.
I'd say probably related to some of the projects and the other funds.
A big pay app in there for six to nine foot.
You know, get that, the tower going on.
Yeah.
Is that normal variance?
Not sometimes, it's just how it falls, I guess. That's a caring question, yeah, but, yeah. What you might see next month is September, we'll look at normally the opposite.
Big thing is at the end of the year, that works out.
Which you're home. All right. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. Tracy, anything you wanna add since I jumped in?
I'm gonna take it all the glory. Uh, anything is, uh, just wanna give you a quick update of Stockwell projects are wrapping up. You know, there's, we're still waiting for site works to do their punch list items. I did contact John Fisher with Stockwell on Monday, where are we at with it? Because they were supposed to have the punch list items done a couple weeks ago, and they're still not completely done. So he's gonna have a meeting with them to get them going so we can close out that project and get that taken care of. Um, we kinda talked a little bit about the logo, but just to tell you where we're at, we're kinda working at taking down the old logo where we can. Um, I have received, um, the file for, of the different formats of the logo, so, you know, to use, you know, when we order stationery or vinyls or when we put on the water tower, different formats are needed. So I have that packet from Henkin and Schultz, so, um, we can proceed with that. Um, I sent the new logo to Grow Cots as far as getting, um, new shirts or uniforms for the guys. You guys might think a little bit about what you want, whether you want polos again or cardigans with gals or vests or whatnot. But you guys can think about that a little bit and we'll maybe talk about it.
So I get to do whatever I want. Huh, I get to do whatever I want. I'm not only the gals.
Yeah, you're the gals. So you might just not want to have a work like the guys, so. We do have catalogs here. Our group has their catalogs, so you can look at. So maybe wanna be thinking about that a bit, of what to order for this group, so.
It might be nice to have you suggest like two or three items and colors for us and then.
Yeah, 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 we can pick out like, um, Jenny, I think, was gonna go down there and pick up a couple, a couple catalogs this week. So, yeah, we can look through and pick out, yeah, like I said, a couple, three items for you guys to look at. Tell us what you want, so hopefully.
Yeah, I hope to get the shirt as quick as I can.
I have contacted a couple of signage firms in Sioux Falls, Fast Sign and Signarama, to talk about, um, you know, our welcome signs. We're gonna try to get that grant, so that'll be kind of a process with those won't come around right away. But, um, we're working with them for a sign, uh, I'll buy our new wastewater treatment facility, the mayor's been talking about, so get a quote on that. Um, give us a quote on, you know, vinyls for our windows, for our trucks or whatnot. So I'm getting a couple quotes on those, so we can start moving ahead with that. And then we're also getting quotes on the paperwork, the stationery, the letterhead, the business cards or whatnot, and we'll try to get the, the best deal with them, so we can kinda get all that replaced and going forward. So it's all in the process of getting quotes and whatnot, but I'm hoping in the month, two, we can kinda have everything switched over, the new ones, so.
Good.
That's a wrap. Um, one other quick thing I wanna mention, um, you know, we approved the billboard lease for the one billboard out here. Um, I'm working with Golden West. They also want, uh, to lease one of the blank billboards out there. And then the, um, where the American used to be, the, the part, they wanted to get out of that lease, um, I'm working with Ace to actually take that spot. Hopefully, in the next month, too, um, we'll have all the billboards rented except for one, um, number one to one, the very west side. That's blank. It's kind of a bad billboard to rent because, uh, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but the trees that are encrestments kinda block the view a little bit, so not a whole lot of people, uh, jump out renting that one. But, uh, we should have all the rest of them under lease agreement next month. My other thing, just to let you know, I'm gonna be attending the municipal conference, um, tomorrow, so I'll be out of the office, but I'll be back Thursday, Friday.
Are you going up to, Craig?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna come back on Thursday, so I'm back for stuff on Friday.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for Tracy? All right, we'll move down to new business. First up, Hartford Hometown Christmas, uh, releasing their twenty-twenty-two allocation. You wanna talk?
No, I just want to.
Well, you don't know how this works, do you?
So, yeah.
Make sure, make sure that everybody knows who you are.
Oh, I'm Sherry Goble.
Yeah.
Sunshine.
Yeah.
But, I mean, as far as that check, we are probably three, four, four meetings in on the hometown Christmas, uh, what we're doing this year. So that's all.
Well, it was already approved. We just have to, we'll just, uh, get it finalized and then Karen will get a check sometime in the next three or four months. I'll bring my Stamper down and we'll get it taken care of.
All right. Any action from the council on this? Mullin?
You need a motion.
Okay, ten seconds. Any discussion? Not? Hold on. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Yes.
Maxon?
Yes.
All right. Do you have something stuck in your head?
On the, um, the avenue flags.
Oh, oh, you're, you're next on, too.
Yeah, so I'm just saying.
Wow, I didn't know that. I thought you were involved. Oh. All right, next up, Sheri, yeah, this is gonna talk about the Optimus Club, request for placement of flag, Boulevard, Boulevard flags are up. All right, go.
Okay, this time I'm Sheri Goble, Optimus. Okay, so I don't know what, if, what, or if you have questions, but I thought one thing that would be helpful was to show you what would go in the Boulevard.
Okay.
So it's crimped at the bottom here, and that's what gets bounded in. It'll be up slightly, a cap on top of it during the off-season, right? When, when the flags aren't up, there's another cap that will go on. Then the post flag will go straight, straight down into this, and we will put them up and take them down on the same day because they won't be lighting. So, um, and so you know, which is not in here, I'm also work, working with the American Legion on this and, um, having a little bit of something like here.
Okay.
And that's one of the things that they're going to help us with, with training and, um, doing everything appropriate with these flags. We have places to store them, all that's taken care of. We're still looking for a group to use this as a fundraiser. Um, and they're looking at a group within the school if they can find that, and these kids will help with that, and they will pay them to do that and how to go into their funds, so. But we're not, we're not to the point where they've gotten it. I haven't heard that we have.
And this is a fifty-dollar yearly, once?
It's, it's fifty dollars a year, and there's five times that flag will go up, okay? Yes. And so it's actually inexpensive, and I don't know if you've ever driven through a town that has these, uh, it's absolutely amazing. I mean, we just went up to the cities the other day, and Wyndham has theirs, and it's just gorgeous. But we are suggesting that we will do it for businesses and for homeowners.
Uh, we were in, uh, Dodge Center, where my oldest daughter lives, and they do it there.
Yeah.
They have it. They, I don't even think it was a holiday, we came, or that amount. Something had happened and they, they had them on. It is pretty impressive. There's a lot of them.
But we do need the okay of the city to do the.
Say again? Where is it running from?
The days it will.
No, physically.
Which street? Oh, we're gonna do it anywhere anybody wants.
Any homeowner that wants to have it in their Boulevard, and then any business as well. So like Sunshine, you know, we'll definitely put in front of Sunshine.
Sure. So you're great with, like, multiple flags in front of Sunshine, then?
I think so. I think we're, you know, with the width that we are, I think we will do two or three of them along there, depending on what our neighbors do. There is, so. And so, you know, it could be along thirty-eight, it could be along Western, down Main Street, um, any neighborhood.
What I'm intending to do, simply just to give you an idea, I'm gonna talk with the guys down Patrick and just see, you know, how many people would like to do it, so they can kinda figure out, you know.
Yeah, I think it's a huge tragedy.
Yeah.
That could be. It could be a very good fundraiser for these groups as well. And I have quite a commitment on part of the Optimus.
Yeah, yeah, right, I, yeah. So.
But I think it was, we're hoping for two hundred in the first year.
If I bought one for my home, though, I'm saying, maybe, if I bought one for my home, could I request that it be placed along one of those other corridors?
I don't see why not. I mean, right?
Right, I mean, it's yours.
That was my thing. As long as it's a property owner along that corridor, so you can bet, put it in.
And then we'll have to work with property owners, too, and plan for systems.
What about, what about some of those? Yeah, it's not as much a bond as you want.
No, self-achieve, if it's just in front of my house, you know, but if it's all there on the main corridor, everybody gets to see that.
I, well, then, like, if it's a little bit, we get quite a lot.
What's that?
Boy, it just is.
Um, these are, I mean, we'll not, uh, we won't bother with a lawn mower or anything like that, or would you give her a place that?
So what type of campaign are you guys planning to do?
Um, right now, they're talking about, um, doing this, hopefully even at a football, if we can prove, a football game yet. Um, and having, uh, the engineers come down at a football game with this group. That's when they'd be doing that, you know, raise a flag for the, you know, things like that. Uh, we're also have a flyer that's, uh, we've done now, and we'll be sending a flyer out as well. So I hope social media, I don't know about that yet, yeah.
Are there any roads up this city you should take that, I mean, you need to think about that way? Or when you say don't make corridors in town, I think about, like, a lot.
Right.
Maybe Mickelson's not a priority because a lot of that, but, you know, somebody's probably not gonna pay to have, like, um, just thinking out loud, like, what would be the borders where we would wanna try to encourage that?
Century Square, they already put the flags up, they just keep them there. But you'd have your parks or something like that. These are actually gonna be going in the whole mards, correct? So.
Yeah.
I like Harden's idea, give them a name, put together.
Well, yeah, yeah. Motion to approve the, uh, Optimus Club request for placement of flags in city Boulevard areas.
Any more discussion? And I noticed on here that you guys take care of all the locate calls and all that stuff, so.
Okay, so I have to.
There's really no expense to the city at all, just, you just wanna make sure that it's okay. All right. Any other discussion? Not? Hold on. Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Maxon?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
It's gonna look awesome.
Yep, it is. It's a great idea. All right, next up, uh, review, approve, acknowledgement and guarantee of sanitary sewer allocation for Turtle Creek. Reese, do you wanna give just a little background? It's in your, in the packet.
Sure. Um, so for the Maple Pass development, in order for them to get sewer to service their development, they need to run sewer, um, from our lift station on Mickelson Road up to their development. The route they have laid out is they're proposing to, they need to go on Sam Assam's ground. So they've been working with Sam Assam as far as getting apartment easement for this sewer line for their development. Um, they may have temporary easement as well, but, um, they're working back and forth with Sam to, to get this easement, and that's what's in your packet now. The city's, and that's between them, too. The city's part in that, though, is that Sam Assam, during these discussions, since they're hooking onto that lift station, you know, that's also what services his development, and he just wants a guarantee for the city or some kind of assurance from the city that when Maple Pass comes on and their development utilizes this lift station, it won't take away from his capacity, you know, what's proposed for his development. So, uh, we had ISG do, run the. So, uh, we had ISG do, run the calculations on the lift station, you know, to make sure that it can service both Turtle Creek, you know, and what it's currently servicing, and Maple Pass, and that too was in your, um, packet, but basically, we've determined that lift station has more than enough capacity to do both developments, so. Sam wants something in writing from the city, you know, Sam, so he made that part of the easement agreement, and, and that one page in there is basically an, an offer to the city that, yes, we will guarantee your allocation of, you know, the lift station that, you know, and if for some reason, somehow, it's not able to service it, it's at the city's expense, which we would expect anyway. Keep in mind that lift station only needs to be going for two more years, and we'll be have our. Plan, it'll, it'll go away, so it's not like, this is a long-term thing, so, um, you know, like I said, we're talking with all the parties, you know, my recommendation is, you know, if this can move that easement forward, which we wanna do that for Maple Pass, um, I don't see any reason why the city can't sign that acknowledgement for that guarantee, um, the numbers seem to work out, and we have plenty of room over, but was, over and above what was originally planned for, plus, plus adding Maple Pass to it, so.
A little unprecedented.
It is, it's, when, um, Sam first asked about this, and he brought up this concern, I kinda thought it'd be a, a separate agreement or something he'd wanna do between the city, he worked it into the easement agreement, and like I said, you know, definitely don't wanna do anything to hold up that easement for him, but.
This, this provides the easement for Maple?
Well, it provides our portion of it, that acknowledgement, um, you read through the easement, I mean, there's quite a few things in it, and a few blanks there, uh, he's asking for Maple Pass to supply some dirt and whatnot, and, and so those are items that'll need to work out, and if we can help facilitate any of that, that would be good too, but.
Won't the city get that easement in two years?
This sewer line will be, come, no, we'll be getting rid of that lift station, so.
Tied in before?
Will be, yeah, it'll become Don Highway thirty.
It'd be like, the, the main trunk line would be hugging the highway a little more securely, uh, we started talks with Sam, so Sam's aware of that, coming in the future, and he's been pretty good to work with that apart, um, because he knows that, you know, that's just as bad.
We will, we, we at the city will need future easements from Sam along Highway thirty-eight for that main line.
Right, that, that, that lift station tied into our sanitary sewer line?
No, the lift station will go away, although, but if the line that comes into the lift station will get tied into the main trunk line, that's going to.
How will it do that with all the easement, but the city has to secure?
So on the north side of that loop of Mickelson, that where it squares up to, uh, a priority area, there's actually a manhole, um, opposite the lift station, um, there's already actually a pipe stuffed out going in the opposite direction, which we'll use that to tie into the main trunk line. So we'll be on the north side of Mickelson, um, and then the, uh, the segment of pipe that's under Mickelson, um, take out the lift station, and then I believe that actually goes back to Sam, but, so like, yeah, so that infrastructure's already in place, just to tie into.
Was this essentially just a temporary easement until we get our?
It says permanent, but it's gonna be more.
Basically, it'll go away in two years, yeah, once we, never.
We obviously have some forestry if we do, but.
Last thing we'll need, uh, Sam, I need to, uh, he needs this future sewer line to take in his other portions of property. So without this main trunk line going to get eased, his other property's either gonna have to have another lift station, or it's not developed.
It's down in north of, uh, north of Mickelson?
North, uh, further east, further east of total precondition.
Does it all that place?
Right.
Cause he'll come straight across and hook on.
Yeah, so he'll bring all of his, extend on down to the north of this main, this main line.
Got it.
And he, he already has that indicated on the preliminary plan, so he already called out future city facilities.
I think, and, and we've, preliminary talks in a long way, he knows, he'll need to grant some easements to us for that line in order to service his, all his development.
Right. I think motion to approve the acknowledgement, guarantee of sanitary sewer allocation for Turtle Creek. Any more discussion? If not, oh, whoa, Brenneman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Alright. Anything else you need with that, Theresa, no?
No, I will contact Sam tomorrow and Maple Pass, and let him know that we'll have you sign that tonight, and that, um, city's portion we've located, and let him know if there's anything else that he can do to facilitate them getting their easement, we'll try to work with them.
Alright. Last thing, uh, are a couple things under new business yet, first one, review and approve the part-time snow removal job description as presented. I looked through this, I didn't see anything that was a question.
The only thing I jumped out of here was the date.
Oh, that's right.
It made it be, um, you know, set at Hartford City Council on, uh, ten four, twenty sixteen. That's when this document came into existence.
The compensation?
That's when that comp, that pay range of twelve to twenty dollars came into existence, yeah.
Probably not. Doesn't seem to have a place in today's economy.
Well, the reason why it was only twenty is because we had guys that were making nineteen.
Right.
So it's hard to. The twelve was.
I can't kid them all, I love twelve.
What did we pay last year? I, I mean, we don't give them the twelve, we, yeah.
Seventeen, no, I reckon it's more than that.
I said, we, we've been paying towards the higher.
It's a range.
Is that something that we do from time to time, is that pay ranges?
Yes.
Yep.
And it'll, that pay range is the, adjusted.
I, I, I said, we, we are, cause the big time, we are paying towards the higher and a couple there, so, I mean, we definitely could adjust it if we want to. I, I don't think anybody will go for twelve anymore, I don't know, fifteen to twenty-five.
I can, I can go move stone, you know, for guys on Facebook for twenty to thirty bucks an hour. And it's a weird market, I don't know it, um, but I would, I would think if, if you're gonna convince me to work nights, weekends, holidays, I would wanna make time and a half at a minimum, potentially to get in that truck and do that, so more power to you to get, to get that position filled, it's a, it's a challenging market.
What have you hired at for the last two years?
I wanna say it's.
Just like two?
I wanna say that's gonna pop out of my.
The last, yeah, we've had the same guy the last three years, uh, he's a.
We don't give many out.
Well, that's him.
Professor at the college, so usually with snowing, they're, they don't have school either, so he's freed up and.
Right.
Weekends from, from that class, so it's good for that type of, of occupation.
Alright.
I make a motion to approve the job description and advertise?
Perfect. Maybe I wanna make a second? One second. Any more discussion? Not? Oh, whoa, O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Alright. I have two mayoral appointments that I was supposed to make in September, but somehow I was gone, I can't figure out how that happened. First one is to appoint as our city attorney, Freeburg, Ask and Nelson, uh, Tom Freeburg is their representative, I would like to appoint them for the upcoming year as our city attorney.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? And for our city engineer for the upcoming year, I would like to appoint ISB for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Alright.
If not? Oh, I can't, I said not. Take that off.
Take that off.
Alright, I believe we have to go into executive session for economic development, and.
Can I just, um, give a little?
And personnel?
No, legal update.
And legal. We do know.
If we always come up with something.
We don't, and economic development.
We can't make it all.
Alright, we got a motion, a second? All in favor? Not? Alright. Okay.
How about somebody in motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.